Here.
Item two, fiscal year 2015, 2016, budget discussion and action. We'll start with item A. I believe we have a motion.
I guess there's motions at our desk here that Anthony, you want us to take care of.
Yes.
Okay. The first motion is to increase account 101-4401-102000 by 12,679 and account 101-4401-12000, pension and social security by 4,900. This is due to the part-time, the recreation part-time account. The hours were listed incorrectly in our budget book. So I make that motion.
I'll second. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
May I handle that?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armin?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
The next motion is due to the local elderly tax credit. It was incorrectly listed at 75,000 and we revised that ordinance last year to $100,000. So I'd like to make a motion to increase the amount of the elderly tax credit allowance on the summary page from 75,000 to 100,000 to reflect the ordinance change. Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Kenloa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armin?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
The next motion is to revise the brand list numbers to reflect the Board of Assessment Appeals action and other reductions allowed by law. These deductions amount to 1,209,001 off the grand list previously reported. So I'd like to make a motion to decrease the taxable brand list by 1,209,001 per the assessor relating to action of the Board of Assessment Appeal, 696,069, and other changes of 512,932. Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Kenloa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armin?
Epstein.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
And the last motion, at our town council meeting last week on April 7th, we made a motion, the council made a motion to fund 66 and 2/3 of the self-insurance risk corridor and the proposed budget only had 33 and 1/3 percent in it. So I'd like to make a motion to increase line 101-4734-721-0820001 by 79,662 to reflect the town council's decision to fund 66 and 2/3 of the risk corridor in self-insurance, medical insurance.
I'll second that. Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Armin. Roll call.
Mayor Kenloa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armin?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Now, moving on. Want to continue on to revenues?
Anthony, I have a question. All of the sheets that were at our desk last week, were these updated for the budget books? So we have to work off of these instead of in the budget book? So is the only changes to revenues the motion that we just made in regards to the assessment? Okay.
Anthony, I have a request for you. It's got to do with, but doesn't have to do with it. Could you give me a, or the whole council, a report on the bonding debt for the town as a whole and break it down as what we owe to who and where? You could do that for me and then I can get a total of the whole bonding debt.
Get it on my side.
Thank you.
Also Matt, back here on 3498, is that the number? Yeah. I'm making a printout for him to show on the
Where everything goes. No, another question, Anthony. Size of our town, what would be the upper limits of our bonding as far as to look to people that were not overextending ourselves? Because I know that they have
136.
Yeah.
Is state statutory limit as to what you can bond? No town ever comes anywhere here. In our case, the total limit to bond
250?
Yeah, 255 million dollars.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure on that number.
From a legal perspective, it's not. It's more of, you know, what do you want to pay?
Right, well, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to know where we are and what our upper limits would be as far as if we're pushing the limits or what.
The sheet's got the principal and interest payments broken out, starting with the current fiscal year we're working on and then going up to 2028 is our last year. Basically, there's the 2009 refinancing we did is still out there. 2010 refinancing, there's two series to that. We had some new money in 2010. There was a second, the last piece, I should say, of the NBIS bonding and some general money that we got for around the roads at that time. We did a refunding in 2011, 2012, and 2015. Those are the debts that's out there. Counselor Corbin?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think it's also depicted graphically in your book on page 135.
Big book, little book.
The 130 bound book shows the drop off that happened in 2018 and then the next big drop is 2026 and then 2029.
I'm not sure Anthony has attempted to show the drop in the debt service. It's not showing the drop in debt, correct? Page 135.
Right, that's the debt service annual payments. You can follow the numbers on the legal sheet. You see it's like 5.5 and then next few is 3.7, 3.5, 3.4, and then the next big jump down is 2026 goes down to 7,439, so on. So this is the non-roads and that's the graphic version.
So we'll start, we want to start looking at capital improvements. Item B, is that will lead us into the discussion of bonding and where we're going.
Okay, so Anthony, you sent us, or Mike had sent us an email that Anthony Esposito had gone through on our CIP budget and redid a little, made some suggestions as far as bonding for road projects and moving some things around on here. So, just so the audience knows, there were certain things that were originally taken out of the CIP budget that were proposed by department heads that have been suggested to be put back in. Let's see here. One of them is, actually, we are, it has been proposed to add back $25,000 for seed money for an outdoor playscape at STW since that is where our summer program is held and there is currently no place for the kids to play or nothing to play on. And also with the TBS roof project this summer, the playgrounds at TBS will be off limits because of the roof project. So they will not have that space to use also. And that money is proposed to come out of LOSEF money. And then there's also $15,000 for the Mill Road lacrosse field, or what's being used as the lacrosse field right now for some stairs and ramps to the field. And then there is, this is just so hard to follow these numbers without
Why don't you start at the top and move away down?
Okay. All right. So the gas conversion, the retrofit expenses of 106,000 that originally was proposed to come out of the NBIS funds, that has been suggested to delete that and not go through with the gas conversion up on the Northford end of town. The town hall security has been, there's been a line item added for $7,500 and that would be coming out of the NBIS funds, correct?
Probably should make a motion each time.
Well, I just want to
If you'd want to discuss it first.
Yeah, we're just going to kind of go over all of it. There is the fire training facility of $350,000. That was deleted out of the budget and that has been suggested to be put back into the budget, but take, if we do a bonding package to include that in the bonding package. The fire equipment reserve for $200,000, that originally was going to be split 1,000 out of the budget, 100,000 out of the budget and 100,000 out of the NBIS funds. That has been suggested to be changed to all 200,000 coming out of the NBIS funds. Public Works Equipment Reserve, same thing, 100,000 from budget was proposed and 100,000 out of NBIS. And now the suggestion has been made to do all 200,000 out of the NBIS funds. Chip sealing. It has been, it was, there's 200,000 in there for chip sealing, which was all coming out of the NBIS funds. It has now been proposed to take 100,000 out of the NBIS funds and 200,000 out of town aid from the state for a total of 300,000. The White Hollow Road drainage and reconstruction, the engineering, I guess only the engineering was proposed at 125,000 out of the NBIS funds. That has been deleted from NBIS and it has been suggested that we bond $2 million.
How did it get that high?
Yeah, what is
How did it get that high?
Is that for the whole project?
Right, it's not just the engineering, no. It's shifting engineering into the full of, well, Kurt can speak to that as well, but the whole project of
Of redoing the road.
Redoing the roads and not just that area, but, well, that area and one other road. So it's a culmination, it means it's all of it in there.
Yeah, that's design work and construction work. The general White Hollow Road area, Bluebird, Hummingbird,
Are there drainage issues?
There's drainage issues and what we have, there's a lot of pipes.
Kurt, could you come up to the mic? Thank you.
Are you saying that that's more than one road then?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a
It's listed as like
That's a general area.
Yeah, it's listed as one road.
Right.
It's probably about four or five roads.
Yeah, I think it's probably five roads in total.
Is that every one of those roads north of Lanes Pond?
North of Lanes Pond and sort of east of White Hollow Road.
But it's all of them. That's
It's all of that. What it doesn't include a little bit to the north, like Blue Trails Drive and all that, they're not in there. But it's the Hummingbird, Blue Jay, Skylark, yeah, Birdland, basically what we call it. And again, there's a lot of drainage work in there, the pipes, their corrugated metal pipe, they've collapsed. Brandy's done sort of some patchwork job on it, but we need to evaluate that and probably replace a lot of those pipes before we do any, you know, the major work on the surface of the road. And that's included in there. I mean, we have a pretty rough estimate because we haven't detailed it all, but we feel comfortable. But it would take care of a lot of standing problems.
So those in addition to this map that you gave us?
They're on the, they're in the upper right-hand corner, sort of the orange colored one in the, on that map. There's a whole neighborhood. And just to give a little history, we did some bonding about four years ago for some road improvements. We knew these were worse shape, but we knew we couldn't touch them with just the money we had. We identified them, we put them off, we did roads, we paved roads that we could save. These were already too far gone and that we have to really do more of a reconstruction on them.
Is it going to reconstruct White Hollow all the way out?
Well, White Hollow won't be touched because we were able to pave that, we were able to save that. We did that about four years ago. But all these other roads, again, Birdland basically
So it's not White Hollow?
It's not White Hollow Road.
But that's what it says.
So it's a missing
Well, it's the White Hollow Road area, I mean, commonly don't have, right. But it includes those five, I believe those five other roads in that neighborhood.
So Kurt, when you're on that, is that part, so if you, if you'd added up everything, we have like 3.2 million we were going to bond for roads. So that's part of that 3.2?
That's part of that number, right.
Now, and I know that Anthony sent it out, you know, you really only want to bond for enough stuff to do in 36 months is what you have. So our roads are bad all over town and you can use different contractors. So why wouldn't we want to go to like $5 million and put four into the roads and?
Fire training facility with 315.
The roads in such shape, we could spend it and we could find the right
I mean, in 36 months, you could spend
Thing is, you can do it in 36 months?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the thought process is, these are the basic reconstruction. Woods Hill Road, we've also identified as needing some major work on it. A lot of the other ones are basically, we mill the road, mill and repave. Those are relatively easy to do. There's not a whole lot of engineering. It's pricing, doing some field modifications.
But we may save the road.
And we can Yes, and that's absolutely the concept behind it. The best thing we can do with a road is repave it, resurface it before it gets too bad. Because then we're not faced with a major reconstruction like we are up in, off of the White Hollow Road area for $2 million. I mean, the goal always has been to try to, to get them early enough on so we avoid that major expense.
Well, is when you have drainage issues that dictate whether you have to re-engineer the road or not?
Yeah, I mean, and that's, in this area, there's some other issues that sort of enter into it. And this is more of a reconstruction. Sometimes we can just grind up the surface, reshape it. If the drainage is good, reuse that space and repave. And that's sort of an in-between type of alternative that, you know, we do a lot of times.
That's on top of pavement overlay of increase of $500,000, correct?
Yeah. Those, they're at the workshops and I handed out something and basically, my recommendation was we ought to be spending about $600,000 a year and annually on road projects just to maintain them at a decent
After you catch up.
We have to catch up. That's the critical thing. If we spend a half million dollars a year, $600,000 a year, we'd never really catch up. We sort of maintain what we have. But we've got to spend some upfront money to try to make, you know, significant improvements and get to a real, you know, a decent level.
And then what's J here, which is drainage increasing 20 to 30,000, what, where does that?
Well, that's miscellaneous drainage projects throughout town. I mean, we've, it takes care of, if we got to extend the line, those small little projects.
Kurt, answer me this, you went for Andy. We give you $4 million for the roads. You can do it in 36 months.
Yeah.
Am I, for Andy?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all we need to know.
And like I said, we've identified the major ones. The rest of them, we can get, we can get those going. Every year we do a
Well, once we catch up, it's reasonable just to keep it up instead of let it go like it's been going on for years and years and years in this town. We need to step it up on a lot of things.
It's not just roads are in this type of condition though.
Mike, I don't think everybody has this
What do you mean?
It's the email.
It's the list. Was he attached into the email?
Thank you.
Right, and you got to get this started. If we don't, it's going to be put off for even more time. I understand that. That's why we need to get this done. There's a lot of cutting that we've been doing for years and years and years, even probably 20 years. What's your newest truck? How old is your newest truck? I know you, it's before that.
22 years old.
Thank you. So, I mean, obviously, for the last 20 years, we've been, I don't want to say neglecting things, but we've been cutting back to try and keep people's taxes reasonable and now people are hurting because our roads are shot and a lot of other things need to be redone and now we have to do it.
Okay, so we'll just continue going down this list while Anthony's making that. Pavement overlay was 290,000, 240 was out of town aid and 50,000 was out of LOSEF. It's now, those two amounts are taken out of that and 500,000 is put into the bonding. It was suggested that we put it into the bonding figure. Crack ceiling was $25,000 out of town aid, increased to 35,000, stays under town aid. Drainage was $20,000 out of LOSEF money, increased to $40,000, stays under LOSEF. Woods Hill Road project, $500,000 out of bond fund. That was added in part of the email. And then the Great Hill Bridge project was added at 200,000 under bond money. Under Culture and Recreation, there was $10,000 for the North Branford Youth Football Practice Field added under other funds, which would be the NBIS funds. $25,000 for playscape under LOSEF funds was put back in and 15,000 for the Mill Road Field was put in under LOSEF. It was suggested.
I have 10,000.
For
Did you get this, Rose?
Yes, I, yeah. And then everything else stayed the same. Under Education, under NBIS, what was originally there, 120,000 approximately for the NBH additional funding for bathrooms, 30,000 for the track, and 190,000 for AC units at TVES. So those were the suggestions that were made from Anthony. Anthony, I noticed the town aid, LOSEF funds with the suggestions that you made, the dollar amount changed, the total dollar amount changed? Is that because our funding went down or?
No, just some additional funds. There's LOSEF forgetting $88,000, I counted for 80, we lose a little.
Okay.
The town aid useful projects, we're getting 301-074, we counted for 301 on that one. LOSEF we're getting about 280, there's 235 to count for there, so.
Okay, so there's the
You can put other projects into town aid road, you can bump up those numbers if you like.
Okay.
Use the whole 280. It doesn't get used this year. It typically happens as they accumulate over a couple of years. That's what's happening now. There's actually spending two years' worth of town aid road money currently. You have 280 from last year and this year combined and there's a lot of new projects they're working on this spring. So it's not a delusion, illusion kind of thing. So that money will, 280 from state sits in that fund for town aid projects. So if you don't assign any more to that column this year, they'll be using it for next year's projects.
Okay. Okay, so do we have to make a motion separately for each individual item or?
I would, you could, please.
Well, how about if we?
Or you want to adopt the revised plan as you just read it? Do you want to or?
Well, no, because I want to make some more revisions. I want to suggest some more revisions.
Take it from the top then.
Suggest away, Rose.
Suggest away.
Well, on bonding Well, on, on bonding, the figure has been suggested at five million dollars total for bonding. We would like to add under bonding funds, the Memorial Tennis Courts, Basketball Courts, Electrical Project, as part of that five million dollars. And I'm gonna use the figure that was given to us last year of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
This is the tennis courts you're talking about?
The tennis, yes, the tennis, basketball courts, and then the, it's the whole lighting system.
Okay.
That electrical system has to be redone because it's an accident waiting to happen on there.
Okay.
And the, we have applied for two STEAP grants and have not received any funding. And originally, we were going to try and do this last year with some LoSiP money and then there was some changes in how that money could be used and we used it otherwise. So I think it's time that that project gets done. And so that's why I'm suggesting part of that five million dollars gets used.
We didn't get this DEAP grant this year.
We haven't gotten the last two that we applied for, specifically for that. And I don't think we are going to, and we can continue to keep applying, but I don't think we're going to.
Who normally applies for these grants? Who's, who's charged with doing that in town?
I've been doing the last two rounds. And we had a, in the Stanley T. Williams, we had a reappropriation of what were leftover funds that went, that was the last actual allocation that we got, was a reprogramming, but Rose is correct, the last two rounds, we've been shut out.
And is that also for Board of Ed too, those grants, you're doing that as well?
It's a, it's a municipal grant sometime, you know, in terms of overlap, not specific to education, but more specific to the town where the community shares and.
Operating budget.
Community type projects.
So, so.
I just have one comment about the Memorial, you mentioned Memorial, the Basketball Courts, the Tennis Courts. I think the softball field is in the tropical condition over there.
Right, well, that's all part of the plan of moving the youth football.
Right, so if you're gonna allocate money, I think you should do the whole complex, but honestly, I mean, if you're gonna be.
Well, but then there's Colter Field, so where do you stop?
Well.
And if you're gonna do it, you might as well make the whole complex up to snuff, you're gonna have half of it from nineteen sixty's and half of it that's gonna be today's style, it's kind of like not gonna, not gonna.
Okay, in the memo that you gave us at our council meeting last week, and you talked about bonding so much each year for the next three years until, until it drops off?
You can bond every year for the three, you can take three years out of cliff, you can bond, say, in two thousand fifteen or sixteen and then go in eighteen and twenty-one or, you know, or you can do fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, whatever the council chooses, we make the numbers try to fit into our debt service. I think, I think it goes back, I think to Marie's comment about having a plan. You know, if you have a plan, a master plan, says we're gonna make that, you know, an overall up-to-date field situation, the Basketball Courts, the Tennis Courts, the Softball Field that's beat up, Colter Field, which is, have drainage issues since we've all played there, you know, let's fix it once and for all. It's kinda piecemealing, you know what I mean?
I mean, to add to that, if you do the Tennis Courts over, you gotta repair the Softball Field anyway.
Right.
It's the only way you.
All right, so what are we looking at for ballpark figure?
Well, the figure that Franny threw out at a RECC Commission meeting was seventy-five thousand dollars.
It's a general number, I mean, I don't, I don't back up, but it's.
So if we say two twenty-five for, and seventy-five for Memorial, that's three hundred thousand for Memorial Field, the Tennis Courts, the Basketball Courts, the Electrical. Colter was discussed at the RECC Commission meeting at length, as far as, are we just throwing good money after bad because it is on a swamp? So I would be hesitant to, at this point in time, put any money at Colter until we can get some more information in regards to Colter.
So then the one project that we know pretty close, what we're looking at is the Tennis Courts and the Lighting System, right? That's the one item we're talking about.
The Softball Field needs to be redone, the kids have been playing football on it forever.
Well, the, the softball, the Tennis Courts, the Basketball Courts, and then the, the lights there, that's.
Well, the service.
The service.
The service.
The lights are okay, it's the electrical service.
The electrical issues.
Is that your why that does the service, Franny?
No, we have to do the service part, the box, you know, the panels and stuff.
Oh.
They're just coming, they come to the beater box.
Okay.
But that whole thing was done in the sixties when they did the original.
I remember.
It's, it's.
Okay. What does Colter Field really need? Is it worth going after it or should we close it down and move the kids toward a different field?
Drainage issue?
I mean, it's built on a swamp.
It's always been a swamp since we all played there. And it's never been a good field, it's been swarming with mosquitoes constantly, you know, and I, I wonder if it's worth just taking everything down and just leaving it.
Are those two, are those two projects intertwined with each other?
What's that?
Well, like dealing with, you know, swamp issues and dealing with lighting in the Basketball Courts.
Colter's the one that's down there in the swamp.
So you're telling me that if we do that one part, then we might as well do?
Well, if you do the Tennis Courts over, the only access we have is, you're gonna be on there, you're gonna be on the Softball Field, a lot of it. You gotta take all the fence down, it's gotta be ground up, regraded, it's a lot of work that goes on with it between that and the Basketball Court. It happened last time, we, we do part of the Softball Field. So like Anthony's saying, you're gonna be there, why don't we ever get the opportunity to do it again?
You're right.
And I say get it, I think we need to do some research on, on, on Colter, you know, can we get away with just doing drainage? You know, if you gotta check the water table there, I think it's a water table issue myself, but.
Definitely.
It, it dries out some.
Well, I mean, with Colter Field, are we talking infield, outfield, the whole field?
As far as Colter?
Yeah.
I think it's more the infield, whole plate, and the outfield's not too bad.
Right.
As far as Memorial is, it's the whole thing, it's the infield, there's drainage out in the outfield that's gotta be rebooted and, and some fence issues, but it's a lot of grading and so on and so forth on that. So it's low, it's lower than the Tennis Courts now because we raised the Tennis Courts up once before.
Right.
The Tennis Court thing, all has, I gotta be honest with you, I'm not comfortable with that number of two hundred thousand because the fence has gotta be completely replaced at, at the Tennis Courts, because it's already been taken down once and put back up. That's, that's the original fence from, what was originally built.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, the two twenty-five from last year, because that was, that was.
I think that might have been just paving, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'd have to go back and look.
So that's, that was the only number that we had to work off, it was the two twenty-five on there.
Well, what if we use the two twenty-five for a placeholder and we could take some out of the, what would be four million for the road bonds?
Well, if we did three hundred thousand for the Tennis Courts and Memorial Field, or you could even say three fifty, and three fifty for the Fire Training Center, that's seven hundred thousand on there, so then you have four point three left for the roads.
The thing too is, you gotta remember is that the bonding piece isn't really a decision that needs to be made tonight. That could be discussed after the budget gets adopted sometime in May, sit down with all the pertinent players, Franny gets more numbers on, on Memorial Field and see, because the CIP is adopted typically in the August, September timeframe, so as long as there's no budget fund implications, that discussion could be carried on for another month or so. And finalize, get some firm numbers on all these loose ends, come back and make a firm list of what you wanna borrow, and then we can get the scenarios as far as financing to see what makes the most sense, does it make sense to bond it now where the rates are really, really cheap, should we do one-year bands, instead of it comes into the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and then, once you get a final number, but that doesn't need to be decided tonight, I don't think, that's more of a, the bonding piece could be held off for another month after you do the budget process.
You just need the overall number.
Just the, the budget fund column, it's gonna dictate part of the mill rate, and if we moved everything out of that, the motions, motions can make, that's all that needs to be decided tonight, have time to think about it and, you know.
So then we can split it up after.
Right, have Franny make some, do some homework, get some real numbers on, you know, what does Colter really need, is it worth putting money into, what's the good number for the Tennis Courts, Basketball Courts?
Right.
You don't know.
And that'll determine how much road work we could do.
You can chase number back then, again, the second meeting in May, pick a day, second meeting in May. Say he needs, he needs half a million dollars for the fields, fix him, finds that number. You still need the X amount of dollars for the roads, now you're borrowing X amount more, but at least you have final numbers, a firm number versus, you know, back in that kind of mix.
I, I mean no disrespect to Mr. C Word or any of our volunteer fire, firefighters, but I wonder if it's smart, prudent to invest three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a new infrastructure when just amongst this discussion, you know, we have no shortage of needs, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be appropriated towards stuff that we need to repair that's already in place rather than develop something new? I don't know. But, I mean, we already, we already do training in New Haven or other communities, you know, I don't know. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Well, based on the, our workshop that we had with the Fire Department, when we had it on that Saturday.
Right.
It was a very compelling argument.
I know, I agree it is.
To put the Fire Training Facility in. And my personal opinion is if we're going to bond five million dollars and use it towards roads, then I think we need to wrap some other things into it, and, and I would be in favor of the Fire Training Facility.
I would too. I think it goes a long way towards helping the volunteers get trained and.
Well, we have an excellent fire department, we wanna keep it excellent.
I agree with that. I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, but it's not just about our fire department, it also puts us on the map regionally. Right now, you know, regionally, we're not offering other towns, you know, we're borrowing equipment from other towns right here.
Like the trailer.
Right, exactly.
Which we're paying for.
And when you start hosting regional events here, it goes a long way and it'll also bring in, I think, revenue, it'll put North Branford on the map in a lot of different areas.
I agree that he made a compelling argument, I think.
And I've been to a lot of fire commission meetings and the regional and the training, this will also save us money in the training aspect in the long run. Our men will not be leaving town, they'll be in town. Right now, when we go.
Now, right, now we move everybody to the training facility.
Well, if these men go to train in, let's say, Wallingford, New Haven.
Right.
We have no coverage here.
Right.
We have to get people from other towns to come in. You know, there's a lot of benefit to having this facility here in our, in our town.
How do we address then a garage for our police, our police cars and that emergency stuff? Our police station is beyond.
That's a whole nother.
Anything, that's a whole different project.
Well, that's something we're gonna do is we.
We're gonna have to do that in our planning.
It's gonna be our part of the master plan.
We, we need to build a plan so we're not doing this in the future.
Right, haphazardly.
Right, that's what we need to do and we need to sit down and get it done.
I mean, that's just my concern, is I see no shortage of needs is all. And the training facility could also, is also cross-used with SWAT, police, there's a lot.
And you just said it'll bring in revenue, right?
Yes, it could.
When other, when other towns can use our facilities and pay us rent or what have you.
Right.
Okay.
One other point, as long as we're talking about bonding and since we have a little bit of time, I think we need to have a discussion with the Board of Education also in regards to some of their capital projects that have not been included in our CIP for next year and going forward, you know, two of the items that were on their thing were asbestos abatement at the high school and at TVES, and they also have unit ventilators. We need to start having that discussion about the high school, TBS, that type of things, because if we're going to do some major, whether it's in sixteen, seventeen, or seventeen, eighteen, I think we need to start having that discussion with them now so that we can know what we're talking about and have a plan for bonding.
Right, we can incorporate.
At the next meeting in May, you have all the pertinent players at the table, with all the department heads, Board of Ed, and say, okay, what's your top two or three priorities? You're gonna take one bond package.
Exactly.
That's everybody's needs, not just roads, not just X, Y, you know, make it all, all inclusive.
Right.
So it gives you some time to think about it and the department heads can think about it as well and come back with some.
Scott, could you come up to microphone? I'm sorry.
You could hear me.
I know. We just, we wanna see you.
With, with the conversations about the fields, I know at, at one of our prior meetings, we talked about this synthetic turf field. It, it may be worth your while to look into having a universal location with a, an artificial turf for multi-use. Over time, the payback on something like that, I know there's a shortage of fields, but I think you could really look at a lot of the problems you're having if you had a field that could be used around the clock, that drains, that you could illuminate and have multi-sports playing on that. All of the surrounding towns have at least one multi-purpose turf facility, and I think it's something that's, you know, worth looking into as we put these projects out there, aside from the asbestos, aside from all the other things. Turf, I know, I was at the Sportsplex, they've gone to, the majority of their fields being turf for that reason, and you look at what this past winter did to us with availability to get on and those fields are ready to go. So just food for thought.
Scott, which, which field would you prioritize?
I would use a soccer field, the back soccer field for location. Our, our football field is pristine, it's the, it's the, the talk of, of many local towns because it is in excellent shape, that's kudos to Franny's crew, we have less injuries on that for our contact sports, but for the other sports, you could put the lighting on the backside of the poles and have that as a multi-purpose field right there, where we play our soccer, lacrosse, field hockey.
Oh, you'd be, you'd best bang for your buck.
Best bang for the buck, right there. So, something to think about.
Field across the street on Mill Road, you could put a nice little complex right there, right behind the, about a football practice field, right across the road, and we own that land, and that's what we should do with it, we should make this town into where people wanna come and, and have recreation, whether it be passive or athletic or anything, because that's our greatest asset, is the beauty of our town.
And I know this does not have to be decided, or it doesn't have an effect on the budget, but under the other funds column, which is the NBIS, is all coming out of NBIS funding on there, one of the issues that's, we have approved the TBS roof project, which is in our current budget, and the problem is the, the bids have not been opened for that roof, and there's two areas, two main areas that have been suggested for pitched roof, and we don't know what that cost is going to be.
Not to interrupt you, but when did that bid go out?
When are bids supposed to be opened on that, end of April?
There was issues with the state, that they revised all of their forms on top of it, but the architect had to do all the forms to get them approved by the state. So we have mandatory walkthrough on the twenty-first of this month and the building's May fifth.
May fifth? So, and we have no idea what that pitched part is going to be as an extra cushion. Now, Anthony did, only, he has our portion or the state's reimbursement only at forty percent to give us a cushion, which our reimbursement rate is fifty-six percent. So even if we said that it was forty-eight percent and gave us an eight percent cushion, that's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which could go towards the pitched, which I know is not going to be enough based on the talk, the talk that the architect has had at the building committee meetings. So at this point in time, I would suggest that the hundred and twenty thousand dollars for bathrooms at the high school, because they already have a hundred, approximately a hundred and twenty thousand to, to do bathroom work.
Right.
Is to take that out and add it to that hundred thirty-seven, so now we have two hundred and fifty thousand as a cushion for the pitched roof, and there is a little bit, there is some money left in the NBIS funds in case it goes over that, which I think it might go over the two fifty.
And it won't sabotage the bathroom project.
No, because if the, when the bids come in and we have a better idea, we can always put the hundred.
Put money back.
We can put the hundred twenty thousand back in for the bathrooms, because it was my understanding that all of the work could not be done this summer in the discussions.
So for clarification, with what you were suggesting, would that eliminate any work being done this summer on the high school bathrooms?
Well, you have a hundred twenty from the current budget.
Right.
That is still there.
Right. So you do half of the work.
So you can do that.
That's being bid as a base bid and an alternate.
Right.
And we're also getting prices on each bathroom.
Right, so.
Up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars for the work.
I think it was one eighteen in this, in this, in this year's CIP, so they would, you would have that money so that you could start working on it, and then once the bids are open and we see once exactly what the pitched roof is and everything else, if we have enough money in the NBIS funds, we would reinstate that. if we have enough money in the NBIS funds, we would reinstate that money. I, based on our conversations, it was said that you couldn't do them all this summer anyway at the two hundred and... So it'd be roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That it all, is that correct? That you wouldn't do all the bathrooms this summer?
That I'm not sure of.
I mean, that's, that's why, that's what I'm basing this on is a conversation that we've had previously that all of the work could not be done this summer. So, that's why it's...
I mean, it certainly is an aggressive schedule for the number of bathrooms that have to be done.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're looking at ten bathrooms that, that haven't been renovated in fifty years.
Right, so you still have...
It certainly is a, a high priority. I don't want anyone sitting here to think that it's not a high priority. If you go into that high school and go into a bathroom, I think you would agree that...
Right.
Yeah, I think what we're saying is maybe doing a phase, like one, phase two, like so you can...
Right, and that's why you had a hundred and twenty in this year's budget, CIP. And I just want to put it on hold because the TBS roof project, um, there's been much discussion amongst the council member that we do want to go to pitched. And so we just have to make sure we have enough funding and since we don't have the bids open for that, I just want to be conservative on that. So that's my issue with it. So really, all you need a motion for is to take the two hundred thousand dollars out of, on budget funds?
From the research.
Is it?
Yeah.
If you want to make a motion for all the items you made, all the adjustments you made, at least it gets the ball rolling and the key ones are the, the hundred thousand out of the budget on comps. I think you're correct. Those impact the budget.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to decrease the CI, two thousand fifteen, sixteen CIP budget by two hundred thousand dollars, which is a hundred thousand for the fire equipment reserve and a hundred thousand for the equipment reserve from budget funds.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by, I'm sorry, uh, Councilor Caprio.
One of us.
Roll call. I'm sorry. No, I, I didn't have a bloody discussion or... Uh, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
Do you want a general motion on the bonding or we don't have to do anything with the bond?
Just the five million, right?
You didn't leave that, leave that up here now.
Okay, and do we have to make any motion on the NBIS funds? Or not? Or do you want to wait until the main meeting?
Yeah, just wait until the making.
Okay. So is that all you need on CIP for motions?
Yeah, the other two million, we're probably gonna need, uh, talking with, uh, our scheme public works director. Uh, for that Birdland project, the two million dollars, typically we go out in the November timeframe. The bonds are based on our past practice. Uh, you'll probably need some upfront money to maybe sell some bands, some one-year bands if the rates are favorable. We get some money in place. And I know that the, the fire chief also has the same concern. If we wait till November, the, uh, price may increase into twenty sixteen. So, once we get the numbers finalized, we probably will do soon as the fiscal year starts, sell some short-term notes to get some money towards some of these projects. We have bonding reserves from the, uh, bond council, obviously. And then we'll do some short-term financing to get some seed money in place to allow the engineering phase to start and, and the, um, fire training facility to start if that's the council's ultimate desire.
Do you need motions on the state aid money, the re-allocation?
Go from the top, do all the motions. We're here. Do one item at a time.
Really?
Yeah.
Can't we just do?
Nah. In case somebody has a problem wanting to get in, we will vote big.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to delete a hundred and six thousand on the gas conversion retrofit expenses out of the NBIS.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Fuji. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add, uh, town hall security cameras of seventy-five hundred dollars from the NBIS funds.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to do the fire equipment reserve, two hundred thousand dollars from the NBIS funds.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to do the public works equipment reserve, two hundred thousand dollars from the NBIS funds. Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond? Councilor Armond?
Abstain.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to do a hundred thousand dollars of the chip ceiling from the NBIS funds and two hundred thousand for chip ceiling from town aid.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to delete the, uh, White Hollow area road project engineering cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the NBIS funds.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to delete on pavement overlay, two hundred and forty thousand from town aid and fifty thousand from LOSE money.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor, Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to increase crack ceiling to thirty-five thousand dollars from town aid money.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to increase the draining, drainage to forty thousand dollars from LOSE.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add the North Branford youth football practice field at the Swiatek property for ten thousand dollars to be used from the NBIS funds.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add twenty-five thousand dollars for the STW outdoor place gate to be used from LOSE funds.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Armond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add ten thousand dollars for the Mill Road field to be used from LOSE money.
Second that too.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Armond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
Does this register the location? That was ten or fifteenth of that block?
Ten.
Ten.
And I'd like to make a motion to decrease the NBHS, uh, funding for bathrooms from the NBIS funds from, by one twenty for eighty-one.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio.
Did you say increase or decrease?
Decrease.
Decrease. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fuji?
Yes.
Councilor Ruth?
Yes.
Can we just make one motion on the bond?
Can it involve one, two, three, four, five, six projects?
Do I have to itemize them or just say?
I would mention the projects, yeah.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to bond five million dollars to be used as follows. Three hundred and fifty thousand for a training facility center. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars for work at Memorial Field, the tennis, basketball courts, and electrical work. Uh, let's make that three fifty. Sorry, so that's seven hundred thousand there. Um, five hundred thousand dollars. Pay, well, I don't know how you want to, do you want me to break out all the road things?
Yeah, break the, the big projects, the white, the individual ones like the Woods Hill Road and the White Hollow. Could you change that to Birdland and make it Birdland? It's confusing.
The Birdland Road project for two million dollars. Pavement overlay for five hundred thousand. Woods Hill Road project, five hundred thousand. Great Hill Bridge project for two hundred thousand. So that's three million, three, two. And... One point, well, three, two. One point one million for other road projects as determined, um, by the pub, Public Works.
How much was the excess again, Rose?
One point one.
So everything you itemized was three point nine?
Was three point two.
Plus the seven hundred thousand for the fire station and the, uh...
Three point two.
Towns quarts.
Right, it's, right, it's seven, it's three point nine, so one point...
So it's two point seven oh three R.
You're right, one point one would be miscellaneous road projects.
Three fifty for public training, three fifty Memorial Field, five hundred for Woods Hill, five hundred for pavement overlay, two million for Birdland and one point one for other?
Well, and two hundred for Great Hill.
Great Hill Road Bridge.
So that should be five. Right?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Caprio.
Discussion. Fran, does that work?
Yeah, I, I, I just stuck on this engineering there. I just want to make sure we have money to start engineering for the, with the, you know...
That's not going to be bonding, those are going to be bands.
No, I know, that's what I'm just saying. I think we need money prior to, you know...
Right.
Yeah, we gotta start getting engineered soon.
So if we meet in...
Close that. And we talk about bands.
Yeah, we'll make a one.
So, we'll meet in May when we have more.
Info.
Between now and our second meeting in May.
I just want to make sure you're clear that I need engineering money. Just like waiting until...
Very clear.
It's gonna happen.
And then by the second meeting in May, we'll know where the roof came in so we know if we have to do something with the high school bathroom money.
Right, right.
I'm good.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Fuji.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Where are we going next? Anthony, I've got a question on the, on our, our risk fund for the insurance.
Yes.
So, so we, even though we're all one entity, we divided between the Board of Ed and the town side.
That's correct.
So what about the risk fund?
Same thing.
And why is that?
Why is it split between us and the Board of Ed?
Why would you split that up? Why wouldn't that be a fund? And you know, all of our concerns up here is that somebody can get into that fund. So, and not all of us, you know, super conservative people are going to be here. So, you know, we're going to try and look at this down the road, that, you know, we're going to make this thing so it can't be touched.
Correct.
So why would our risk corridor, why would we be funding that through the Board of Ed? Why wouldn't that be funded? Why wouldn't we pull that out now that we're self-insured and fund it?
No, it's, it's, it'll be a fund on the town's books, similar to what the OPEB fund, or other post-compliment benefits fund. Town contributes money into that pot, the board puts money into that pot, and we pay the premiums out of that pot. Same thing will happen on the self-insurance. The town will put money into that self-insurance reserve, but the board will put money into, and then the claim will come out of that one pot.
And that's a dedicated account that can only be used for that.
I'm going to get language for when this comes out of the project to get the ordinance in place.
That's what we need more than anything.
But why, so, so why wouldn't we, if we, and for round figures, let's say the Board of Ed side would be 450,000. So why wouldn't we just put that in with our, our money?
Isn't it going to be one fund?
At this point. So why wouldn't we just do that, and that would never be back in the Board of Ed budget again? Every year, the risk corridor or risk fund is X amount of dollars.
That's going to be a changing number, though, isn't it?
It's going to be a changing number.
There's two pieces. There's the percentage of the risk fund that we're putting into the pot.
Right.
And then the amount of single, two-person, and family plans you have, there's an allocation rate provided by Blue Cross. That's our premium, if you will.
Right.
So that goes into this pot as well, so.
No, why, why is, why is that in the same pot?
Because it's all part of the medical insurance claims.
Because all the claims will come out of it.
We want it in a separate pot. Why couldn't we do that? Our, our, our fees or, or our, you know, single, family, whatever, is X amount of dollars.
Correct.
And our risk, which is our savings account to, to pay for our risk, why aren't they two separate accounts?
Because the same thing, those premiums are using to pay your claims with as well. So when you, when you go to the doctor and they submit claims, they're going to pull, pull out of this one pot of money electronically.
Right.
And in that pot's got to be the premium dollars, pseudo-premium dollars, if you will, plus the risk corridor funding coming together, and that's where the bills will come out of.
Right. Because everybody gets a bill from the doctors, you submit it to the insurance, you sure, and say, well, I pay so much. And then there's the leftover.
Right, but we don't get into the risk end of it until we've really, until somebody has spent more than, whatever it is. If it's a $25,000 or 28,000 for a family, after that family spent that, then you're in the risk pot. Okay. So I'm wondering why, why we don't take all our 28,000 dollar fees multiplied by the people, that's in the pot. When that pot's gone, then you get into this. And, and again, I'm just trying to separate these things. I don't want anybody to have access into our...
Well, the only two things that'll come out of that account is, is the premium payments and the, the loss payments.
So once we put it in the account, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or whoever's managing it, is the only people that can take it out. And they have free rein to take it out whenever they want.
They, they send me, we, we have a similar arrangement now with dental. We're self-insured with dental. Every day I get an email from Blue Cross, we put $3,000 out today, $4,000 out today, whatever it is. They provide, at the end of every month, a breakdown by subgroup. How much is the custodians and the clerical and the highway and so on. And then we take that number and we split it up between the Board of Ed's groups and the towns' groups, and so charge to our expense. So you need, you need a basis to charge your expense with. So we're going to use the, the premiums, pseudo-premiums, the single, two-person, and family. We'll contribute that into the pot every month. And then the risk corridor piece will come on top of that as well. We're going to figure out our July 1 census count, we're going to split it up. Whatever the number is at that point, when this number gets finalized, times two, you know, two-thirds of it, times the proportion, it's like 74, 26, if you ask in the Board of Ed. We'll put that money in probably quarterly into the pot. And then the claims will come out, as people go to the doctor, will come out of that self-insurance reserve, correct from Blue Cross to go. You're, you're concerned that the corridor pot can be infiltrated, or?
Right. Even by, even by the, you know, insurance giants.
No. Now, as far as anybody else in town going into the pot, we're, we're going to create language, we're going to make it bulletproof.
So my thing is, though, why are we, so we're collecting money from the taxpayers.
Correct.
Why aren't you just taking that money and putting it in the pot? Why does it go, why are we dividing it up? And then, then the...
Well, I mean, I guess you could say, are you, are you trying to say?
See, I don't, I want to just fund that. I want it simple. July 1, we funded that.
Right, so you're saying basically?
So, so in other words, let's say it's 450,000. Why does that 450 go to the Board of Ed? And then quarterly, they're going to give us little pieces of that back. If our, if we're, if we're underfunding our risk, let's put it all in the bank on July 1. Or, or, or half of it then and half of it January or February when we're done with that, when we collect our taxes. Here, let's end this. Nobody else here has any issues with this?
No, I do, I do. I'm listening to what you're, I'm listening to what you're saying, Alan.
I don't even know what I'm saying.
But, but I think...
But the risk corridor is part of the claims. I mean, that's what you're insuring, so you're going to put the monthly premiums into that pot along with the, in the risk corridor. It's going to be in there, and it's going to be one pot that no one can touch.
It's a lock box. It's going into a lock box. That money, we know what we're going to put aside for the risk, that money should be put forward, put in the lock box. I think that's what I was trying to say.
But it's part of the claims. If there's, if a claim goes over and you need to take out of the risk corridor, it's going to come out of that pot.
That's fine. It's, it's got to come out of that pot, but what he's saying is...
And so that has to be there instantly? They can't tell us it has to go? I mean, you know, but, I mean, I know a lot of doctors, and, you know, they say they wait six months to get paid from insurance companies, so why? And, and look at this. Look at all the people who have had their income taxes stolen this year because of a giant insurance companies. You know, they can all say it's not, but let's face it, that, that breach happened, and now half the state's income tax returns are stolen.
Federal government breached every day.
So, again, I want to know why we can't, because, because eventually we could have quite a bit of change, and there's quite a bit of money in this, in this account.
So are you, are you basically saying you want to reduce the Board of Ed budget by that amount would be their, or share the risk corridor? Isn't that what you're saying?
Not if, it makes no sense to do that. What I want to do is take the money and put it away with our money unless it makes no sense to do that. But I don't want, I don't know that I want it...
That's what I thought we would, I thought it was...
If there's a law that says that you have to have it all, well, here's the thing, how could there be, how could the insurance company, we could have only, we could have only put in 33%.
But if there's a catastrophic loss somewhere, then we're responsible for...
And here's the other thing, I mean, wouldn't we want to be investing this money somewhere?
I'd love to invest it. It's not like you're sitting in a pocket, you can, we'll, we'll invest the money.
So, see, here's where I have a problem. We don't, by, by, by law or by whatever, by regulatory, somebody made it up, that we only had to do 33%.
We didn't have to do anything.
No.
No, it's just a rule of thumb. I think 33 was just a...
Yeah, we could have, we could have rolled the dice and put nothing in there.
So again, so what I don't want to have is this pot of money sitting somewhere. I want it locked up as soon as it can be.
Now, the thing is, you could have premium payments from people that are going to that fund every, whatever, two-week pay, pay period that they do. Okay, so now you're going to be putting, it, it should basically be one fund, and I, I kind of like the idea of just putting the money there and leaving it alone and forgetting about it, to be honest with you.
Can you find out from the insurance company if we can do it that way?
And is this going to be set up as like a town HSA type thing?
No, no, it's not interested.
So I, I guess I go back, is, is that risk part, are you trying to take the Board of Ed out of the insurance business, basically, and we'll, we'll get all their insurance bills? Is that what you're?
No.
I'm trying, I'm lost then.
I don't want anybody to be able to get to the money, that's all.
Yeah, that's a different issue, though.
Right.
You're talking about two different things. You're talking about the money that's there first for the payments, then there's the risk quarter, second.
Well, then tell me this, is the Board of Ed going to have their own bank account with the risk?
Negative.
No. All right, so then why, why would it go to the Board of Ed, come back to you?
Because in, in their...
We got the taxpayers.
No, no.
And we got the insurance company.
Right, right.
So we're going to take money from here, we're going to move it over to the Board of Ed, and then they're going to have this money, and then twice a year, they're going to fund this account. Where we should just put it in the account.
I, I think we're confusing...
I have no, well, the premiums have to go to you guys, they're pleasing that.
Actually, because what's going to happen is we're going to pay premiums to that fund instead of Anthony.
All right, you know what, this is good. How often, how, how often, like, are the premiums due? Quarterly?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Monthly, okay.
So monthly, they would put it in that?
So I think that every month, we will send what is effectively a premium check to that fund.
To that fund.
To Anthony to put in the fund. And then if, the way we had envisioned it being structured is effectively, there would be a percentage increase on that premium fund to fund the risk corridor. Now, there are other ways to do that.
So you would, you would, like we've said, 66%. And that's the other, that's another good point. Can the town council encumber the Board of Ed to fund 66%?
Well, it's, it's a town, it's one plan. So once the parameters are set by the town, 66% of, of the risk corridor, that's what the Board of Ed is going to fund into the pot, as well as their monthly premium, if you will, into that pot.
But we could...
Well, I just wanted to make sure of, not that the Board of Ed's going to not do that, but I just wanted to make, you know, because the Board of Ed runs by itself. And we can only touch their bottom line. But just because we said we should fund 66%, do they have to fund 66%?
Yeah, I, I have no inclination that they would do otherwise.
Neither do I. Do they have to?
Do they have to?
So there's, there's two thirds, but their two thirds of the risk corridor cost is approximately 450,000 dollars.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
Because it was 223, so you double that, it's 440. So let, let's say 450,000 dollars is their two thirds percent. So can't we just take 450,000 dollars out of their requested increase and just put it into the fund right at the beginning? And then each month, they just send you their premium because we already did the risk corridor.
I guess so.
That would work, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a good, a good idea, Rose.
So then it's, so then we have the, the board's two thirds upfront.
Right.
And it goes into that pot that no one is touching. And then monthly, they will send the premium.
And how would you do that, Anthony? You would do half July 1 and half February 1 or something? Is that the way you normally do it?
Take the, the number we had in the budget and do quarterly investments, if you will, from the general fund into the special fund for the medical insurance. I mean, if we saw that, because I'm money, we could advance that and move the payments over quicker. It's just an internal transfer of the funds from a general fund account to the, this self-insurance reserve. So if we see the fund is getting completed rapidly, someone has a major, a couple of major claims, you can move money over there, you know, I had a schedule.
Well, so every quarter, the BOE is supposed to give you 110,000, 12,050.
Yeah, we haven't, we never got to the finer details how we're going to, you know, fund it quarterly, this is a...
Right, well, we should kind of work out the finer details. That's, I like finer details, to be honest with you. I don't want to find out later on that we, we didn't cross our Ts and dot our Is, Anthony. So I think that might be a very good idea by Rose to do.
That sounds, sounds cool.
So we can make a motion to take the 450.
And put it in another account.
And put it in the other account, and then you don't have to worry about quarterly payments from the board because we're taking it from their budget.
Then that would be just the monthly premium.
He'd pay the premium.
Correct.
Perfect.
Correct.
And then at a later meeting, we're going to somehow try and come up with some way to say nobody can spend this for anything but insurance.
Well, Anthony's going to put that in language and hopefully with...
So by the second meeting in May, will you have the language?
I will certainly try.
Is that a definitive, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I knew that.
All right, so I would like to make a motion to take 450,000 dollars from the Board of Education budget and put it into the...
Health Risk Management Account.
Yeah, whatever you're going to call the account, Anthony.
Anthony, Anthony's account.
It's going to be the, it's going to be an operating transfer out from the general fund to self-insure. So you're going to move it from the Board of Ed expense lines to the operating transfer line. The general fund is going to put the money into that challenge.
I'll second that.
What was the dollar amount? Use 450?
450.
Is that the right number, Anthony? I mean, it's, should be within a few thousand.
It's a 33.
Well, it was 223 and change for one third, so two thirds would be 446 and change, 447. Do you want the exact number, or can we just say 450,000?
We got a $3,000 cushion.
So we're using the risk corridor based on the last discussion of 940, 874. That's the last memo that I gave you guys.
Yep.
And we're going to do 66 and two thirds.
If you didn't enjoy it.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's up, but already I think...
Yeah, we're just, I'm just waiting to verify.
Verification.
Yeah, what'd you say, 4?
450, I rounded it. What was it?
440 is out of the process. 450 is a good number.
Okay.
Use 450.
Moved by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Kendalah.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth.
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Armit.
Yes.
Councillor Caprio.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councillor Fuji.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
That was just a shift, it wasn't a redoubt.
That was a shift.
From one pot to the other pot.
Right, that's a shift.
Correct.
Well, consider...
So are we on the Board of Ed now, or not?
What, do we do anything with the General Government Services?
How are we?
Exactly as is. That's the next item on the agenda.
Well, you got anything?
Who follows the agenda? Yeah, we have item C, General Government Services.
So Anthony, I have a question in regards to the Park and Rec Department. At our workshop, our Saturday workshop, it was told us that the gym membership goes into the general fund, but all of her other programming goes into the 226 account. And why is that? Why is it divided out that the gym membership wouldn't go into the 226 account?
Uh, well, the kind of goes back historically to when it was the community center fund, and when it was in the old buildings. You got to look at where do the expenses come out that correspond to that gym activity. So if the expenses of the gym come out of the general fund, the revenue comes out of the general fund. Comes in, comes in the general fund. You can't, I'm saying, if, if, if one pot is paying the bills, that pot should get the money coming in. So in the case of 226 fund, say she runs a trip to Yankee State, the bill comes out of, of that fund, and people pay, it goes into that fund. It's kind of matched up. In the case of the fitness room, the expenses are coming out of the general fund.
Because that comes out of her budget, which is part of the general fund?
You got it.
Okay.
So the, the money has to match, but the ends and the outs, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't...
Okay, so the summer program, when she hires temporary help for the summer program, because that money goes into her 226 account.
It comes out, it comes out of that.
The expenses for that come out of that account.
You got it.
Okay.
I have a question about having an additional position in Park and Rec. I think the reason given to us at the budget workshop didn't hold water for me. I don't understand why Park and Rec doesn't have a discussion with the Department of Education and work out something so that we don't have to add another position in that particular department. I question that.
Well, actually, she was looking for two part-time positions.
But I mean, I, you know, the reason was because people come in and they ask about the Board of Ed, and those people have to keep the answer in the questions. Well, why don't you have a discussion with the Board of Ed and see if you can work something out?
Well, I, I think that was a small part of it.
No, it seemed to be the big part of it.
Well, I've been attending a lot of the Park and Rec Commission meetings, and the, the bigger issue for the part-time person, because I would be in favor of one part-time person for 19 hours a week.
Which is what we have currently, correct?
No.
One additional.
No. They, they have some part-time people that do 5:30 to 9:00, and then 4:00 to 8:00, I believe. When, when there is not staff there, the, the regular daytime staff. And the reason she was asking for two part-time was so that the secretary could actually be in the office and do stuff for Park and Rec because there's a lot of interruptions out at the front. And a lot of it has to do, I, I think in the morning, with the seniors being there and...
And people going in for BOE stuff.
Well, BOE, I, I think that's a very easy fix for BOE, and I don't think that's a lot of the time on that.
That's not what was said at the workshop.
I mean, the rationale was...
Right, that she did mention that it was BOE, but I think it's more with the other programming issues on there. I, personally, I don't support two. I think one at 19 hours, part-time, which would, the gym membership definitely pays for one. And at part-time, at 19 hours, there are no benefits for the person. And it was at, you know, I think it was...
And this enables the secretary to stay in the office?
Correct, and do, and do office work for Park and Rec Department. Correct. And then the afternoon would be staff, like she currently staffs it. And I don't know in our, but with anything cut, I can't tell from this, with all the sheets that we were given.
Right.
No, it's still, no, it's still in there, and, and again, it was...
What, the two?
Yeah, the two positions are still in there, yeah. And, and again, to, exactly as you said, to move that person, because of the distance as well, to move that person to the office where, you think about it, it's a frontline, it's a frontline desk as a greeter.
So when, so right now, we've had no secretary in the office, when, that, okay.
Right.
They're out front at the desk.
Yeah, right.
She said she, that individual's out, out front at the desk.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reduce the Park and Rec part-time to just one part-time and not two.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so, actually, so the motion, because we have to give line item.
Oh, sorry.
So it would be 4401, 102. Um, and you're, it's 17 and a half hours is what the proposal was, so we're cutting this down.
What line item did you say that was, Rose?
102. By 9,135, because that's half. So that's the, that's the motion that you're making.
Yes.
Okay, and I second that.
No, I'll second that, Dan.
No, Dan, I already said.
Oh, Dan, okay.
Moved by Councillor Diamond, seconded by Councillor Armond. Roll call.
Mayor Kendala?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rober?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Armond?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Dowd?
Yes.
Councillor Fong?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, Anthony, what's the corresponding?
What was the, can you repeat the number on the, the cut was nine thousand?
Nine thousand one thirty-five. 'Cause it looks like it's eighteen two seventy originally.
Six ninety-nine.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to decrease line item forty-four oh one, one twenty, by six hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Forty-four one oh one.
Four, yeah, it's the, it's the corresponding social security pension on what we just cut.
Okay, second.
Moved by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Armond. Roll call. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rober?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Armond?
Yes.
Councillor Caprio?
Yes.
Councillor Fong?
Yes.
Councillor Fong?
Yes.
Councillor Uche?
Yes.
Councillor Rose?
Yes.
Paul, you won't make a, if you have anything, make a suggestion on the town side? I mean, it's kind of. What's that?
And are you done with the, if you added up, you have any?
Unless, yeah, you got anything you wanna try to?
Anthony, where are we at with, um, what's the mill increase?
The only thing you.
Uh, one point seven oh.
Do you wanna?
How many dollars is point seven oh?
Eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen.
We're gonna have a discussion about motorcycle cop clothes? We talk about it every year.
That's a year again.
I thought we got rid of that stuff.
Do we sell that motorcycle too, or what? Keep laughing, boys.
How much is in it for the motorcycle clothes?
Um.
Who's that number?
Two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. It's, um, I would like to make a motion to decrease forty-two-ten-point-three-thirteen, which is the uniform account in the police department, and this is for the motorcycle officer, by two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And hopefully, it doesn't come back next year, 'cause I think we've been quite clear that we're not gonna fund this, and that we want the motorcycles sold.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Armond. Roll call.
Mayor Kendala?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rober?
Yes.
Councillor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councillor Armond?
Yes.
Councillor Henry?
Yes.
Councillor Dowd?
Yes.
Councillor Fong?
Yes.
Councillor Uche?
Yes.
Councillor Rose?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything else? Dan, do you have anything else? All right, we're on to Item D, Board of Education.
So Anthony, when we, when we move that four hundred and fifty thousand to our, to our side, that decreased the Board of Ed by four hundred and fifty thousand from their request.
That's correct.
You agree with that? So we all are on the same page with that?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna make a motion to increase their budget over last year's budget by three hundred thousand.
I'll second it.
Just so we're clear, and I wanna make sure I'm understanding that, we moved four hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the general government that is allocated for their share of the risk corridor.
Right.
So that's not a cut from their budget.
It's not.
You're proposing to increase their budget by three hundred thousand? They requested a million four sixty-nine?
I think you mean an increase from la, from the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen.
They asked for a million four sixty-nine, I think.
Right, so.
Yep. So in, in, in my math, that's like a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase.
That's what I'm thinking.
If you were funding it.
If you were gonna fund the insurance, it would be the same thing as a seven hundred and fifty.
If we left the insurance in there, it would be seven fifty.
Anthony, what percentage of an increase is that over last year?
Am I wrong in my thinking there, Anthony?
That's what I understand, so.
Too many questions for Anthony.
So your number, so last year's budget was thirty million oh eighty-seven, seven thirty-seven. You're proposing that three hundred thousand.
To that.
To that number.
So thirty million three eighty-seven.
So that's a one, that's one percent, roughly.
There you go. And, but, but we took the four hundred and fifty and are funding that separately. I wanna make sure that that's clear.
And we are not funding seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of what they requested for this year.
That's the math.
I think.
Yeah.
So it would come out to, I, I believe the four hundred and fifty thousand is approximately one point five eight percent of their, of their increase?
One, one.
One point five eight.
One point five eight.
The four fifty, and then if we give them three hundred thousand, that's one percent, so that would be two point five.
Was that the four hundred and fifty originally a part of that?
Yes. Yes, it was.
Okay.
So let's, if you wanna say what the actual, the actual number is.
So it's, it's last year's base of thirty million oh eighty-seven, seven thirty-seven.
Right.
Plus three hundred thousand dollars more.
Right.
So thirty million three eighty-seven, seven thirty-seven.
Plus we're, so, right.
And the four hundred thousand is out of the equation, 'cause we're gonna take that directly and put it into the operating transfer into the pot.
Correct.
So, so what we're thinking, it, it's like a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase if we weren't taking the.
Increase over last year's budget, funding for the Board of Ed.
Could I just ask one question?
Don, are you gonna try and confuse us?
Wait, what was that?
The special ed excess cost grant will continue to go to the town now, correct? As we did this year? I think so, right?
Yeah. At this moment.
So, I guess my question to Scott would be, how does that affect you if you needed?
Precisely, that's my question as well, Scott.
How does that affect you?
Reduction of the seven hundred.
Of, of only getting three hundred thousand dollars increase over last year's budget.
Or essentially.
How does that affect you?
It's, it's seven fifty. It's a seven fifty increase.
Seven fifty, and, and it's shy of the request by seven, what was the difference?
Seven hundred and ninety.
I'm using round numbers. I said seven nineteen. Anthony, why don't you give us the exact numbers?
Right. It's an increase.
Can we back into this cut in the Board of Education budget? How much did we cut from the request made by the Board of Education?
You wanna add back the four fifty to your rest of the ten days?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you add thirty million eight thirty-seven, seven thirty-seven.
That's pretty fair. Oh, no, no, that's okay.
That's a good number.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it's pretty fair, I think.
Six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars less than we asked for.
Okay, so it's, it's a seven hundred, six fifty-eight.
So at six fifty-eight, we equated for every three hundred thousand dollars, it would equate to approximately six teachers. I'm, I'm guessing it's five plus the unemployment of twelve thousand per teacher, which brings it to six per teacher. That's six per three hundred thousand, so if you do, you know, that number with six per three hundred thousand for looking at greater than twelve cuts that we have to address.
Personnel cuts.
Personnel cuts.
Teachers, all teachers?
But that six fifty were new people.
Right, I was gonna say, three of them were new.
And not entry level.
Okay, what would that do to your class size at the elementary level?
Well, if we were to divide and look at four buildings and look at the elementary schools were reduced by three staff members each, you know, your class sizes would blow up if I reduced it, uh, first grade, the second grade, the third grade, from our total number, the fourth, fifth, one section as well.
So that would, my guess would be you'd have class sizes of twenty-four to twenty-five kids.
You'd increase probably by four or five students per class, reduction of one student at each level. They're gonna be your, your inexpensive teachers, your, your, your most recent hired, who are the ones that, per contract boundaries will be reduced.
Okay.
And then you look at, if, if we, we know that we're common core, we have to add to those core areas. So you look at your elective areas, and then you have those very difficult conversations about, you know, the arts. We have, excuse me, at the lower levels, we increased our music at Tutucket Valley last year. We have an art program at Jerome Harrison. We look at elective situations for our youngsters that may be, you know.
Okay, if I look at your class sizes this year, you're talking probably each teacher would get five to six more kids in a class.
Roughly, if you were to divide among the elementary schools.
What would, any?
You've seen, you've seen the reduction in staffing. We, we, we've done, we've done the chart for each year. Our special ed staff has remained constant for the IED and our legal institution. Our certified staffing levels have decreased significantly in the last few years. You're looking at, if you lose twelve, twelve to fourteen teachers, that's probably, what, eight percent down of our teaching staff? Well, it's about a hundred and seventy-five teachers per. Right. So it's significant. There will be a direct impact. It could be with electives that we're no longer offering, or increased class sizes. You know, that's the conversation that the administrative team will sit and have with those cuts.
Thank you.
Has it been seconded?
Don, you seconded it.
So if you, if you take the hypothetical number of twelve thousand five hundred per student, and you multiply that times the sixty-six imaginary students that aren't gonna be there next year, that's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, less that we have to increase the class sizes for next year than they have to do this year.
That isn't valid, first of all.
Wait a minute, what do you mean it's not valid?
Because you would have, you would have that lower number of students.
It's held in front of us all the time. It's so much per student.
You could have that number.
So it's, so, so it's valid when you're funding the student, but it doesn't count when you're taking it away.
Now, first of all, you could have a reduction, but it could have, but one class, one grade could have more kids, you'd have to have another teacher. That's not a valid way of looking at. Plus, that, that per pupil expenditure isn't just staff. It's the maintenance of the plant. It's adding to the plant. It's the transportation. There's a lot of pieces in there that really aren't totally affecting an individual kid. Plus, how do you know between now and, and September, you aren't gonna add fifteen more students? I mean, that's not valid.
You don't know that.
Just take the number and multiply.
Right.
You just can't do that.
Well, and you could decrease by.
But it's, it's simplistic. You'll look at and divide from pre-K through grade twelve and say, well, you're gonna be down five students per class. If you add a hundred and fifty to two hundred per class, and you take five students out of that, you still need to, to have the same number of teachers and the same number of classes.
And you're not.
Our, our buildings are greater than a hundred thousand square feet per building. Heating costs are only gonna continue to increase. We know that over time. So it's all these expenditures that, that play into that per pupil expenditure. So it's not a simplistic formula that you just can say, all right, you're losing sixty kids, times our per pupil amount, and, you know, you're gonna be able to function as well as you were the year before. It doesn't work out that way. It's not that simplistic, you know. Five kids per grade isn't, it's, it's not enough to make a difference.
Scott, I know it's not that simplistic, just like it's not when you're talking about the funding.
I understand that. Two point five is the greatest increase I've had in my six years. I haven't had two point five in, in my six years, so I, I understand what you're saying. But it's my responsibility to provide.
Absolutely.
The best education, and, you know, I, I hear.
And I would, and I would say this, I mean, we have a thing on the floor here. I would tell the Board of Ed to do all they can to look for the coaches you requested with this cut, because I think that's very important.
I can say, I can safely say Alan won't be the highest priority. If I look at maintaining my current personnel to keep my class sizes appropriate, how can I look at my staff? I'm administrative, I'm gonna add three new positions and let six people go to do it. I can't do that. I, you know, I, I've been before you, I, I hear, and don't get me wrong, and I don't mean to be disrespectful. I hear a lot about the roads. I, I hear a lot about smokehouses and things like that. I don't hear a lot about, you know, education, and that's the part that, that's frustrating for me. And I understand you have a very difficult job to do, and I respect the charge that you have before you.
The.
But we don't wanna keep, if we keep going backwards, we're gonna eliminate the things. We're not gonna get the people to commit in this community because of our education. We've accomplished a great deal on very limited resources. You look at where we rank in the state, a hundred and thirty-eight at per pupil. We are able to get the full-day kindergarten. We've been resourceful, we've been creative, we've done a number of things to maintain. But once we start getting over that slippery slope and going backwards, we're gonna decimate our school system, and it takes years to recover from that. You come from a family of educators. You understand what I'm saying. And, and, and.
And you know what, Scott, you're absolutely right. We're looking at.
Everyone sitting before we here has a link to the North Ramford Schools, be it children, grandchildren, you know, spouses. Everyone has a connection here, has had children here very successfully throughout our school system. It's not getting cheaper to educate our children today. We know that, and Common Core is not gonna go away, and it's gonna continue to put demands on us. Don's unfunded mandate shoots four pages. The government is not backing down, and they're saying, find your funding source. Find your funding source, and, and that's the challenges we face. Rose, you know, if I said I'm gonna take four teachers from Tutucket Valley, classroom teachers, what would that do to your school? What would it do? You've been a board member, you've been a chair, you understand.
I know, but I, I'm, I'm, I also understand our limited resources.
I understand that. I'm, I'm asking you a question about what four less teachers would mean in your.
It could be four less throughout the district. I mean, two years ago, when we said, when we made the cut, when you requested all-day kindergarten, and we had a huge cut, what happened? All-day kindergarten got installed that year. We went to that year.
But there was something else that we left out, though, to get all-day kindergarten. We, we had other needs that were not addressed when he instituted.
But they could still have retirements this year. The same thing that came into play two years ago, when we were told we will never see all-day kindergarten in their lifetime, and we got it. in their lifetime, and we got it that year.
And Scott made it, made it happen, I understand that, but again, there was other needs that were not met because of it.
So, so I, I understand that things do happen from year to year, but when I'm, I'm looking at the budget as a, I think seven hundred and fifty thousand, a two point five percent increase is a pretty healthy increase.
It's, I, I.
It's the best I've had, Rose, in six years.
Yeah, I, let me, Anthony, right.
So, so Scott, we know you're going to do a good job with it.
Anthony, we're, we're giving.
I know you're going to be expecting good.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
We're giving them a two point five percent, basically, increase over their budget last year.
Right.
Basically. So that basically covers their contract where the raises came in and all that good stuff, right? Well, basically, does that pretty much cover the raises for the new contract that went to arbitration and all that?
What's that?
Yes, okay, so that covers that, and that's still a seven hundred thousand dollar increase over last year's budget. I, I want to fund these schools as much as I can, I love the kids, I love the sports, I love this town, but to eat a, a one-point-whatever-change-million-dollar increase in a year in a school budget is astronomical. We have needs everywhere in this town that have been neglected for ten, fifteen, twenty years. I would love to give you the money that you requested and let you do whatever you want, but we also have to be able to make it, this town livable for people to come in here. I mean, we have new houses that are being built in Norfolk, they're ranging from six hundred thousand to seven hundred and whatever thousand dollars.
And there, you know what, people are coming into this community because we have the schools that we have, not because we have an outrageous mill rate.
Okay, Dan, calm down and have a conversation.
Well, I'm just saying, it's like we, it seems to me that we come to.
That's what we need to do here, I would love to fund them.
But an eight, a quarter percent increase in your contract for three years hurts this town dearly, and I'm not saying people don't deserve a raise every year.
To be honest with you, I haven't had a raise, I've lost money since two thousand and eight, when the banks crashed, I'm down over twenty thousand dollars a year in my paycheck. Not crying about it, it is what it is.
You're interprofessor, you profess.
Exactly, exactly, and I got to suck it up.
Do you want to come teach for me?
I, I would love to come teach for you, because you know who it would be, all the kids that were like me when I was in school, and I try and tell them not to do what I did when I was young, okay? Honestly, and I would love to do that.
I call the question.
All right, roll call. Oh, well, it was moved by Counselor Rose, seconded by Counselor Fucci. Roll call.
Mayor Ken Loa?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arden?
No.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
No.
Counselor Flanis?
No.
Counselor Fucci?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
What else?
What's next?
So where does that put the mill rate, Anthony?
Thirty-one point zero nine, one point one seven million.
Great. We'll be able to live in the town in a couple more years.
One point one seven.
I guess we could, well, we already looked at that service pretty much, right?
There was money you could do with it anyway.
Yeah. So.
I'll think of anything.
It's still over, finalizing the budget.
It's, it's crazy, we're done. Unless you got anything else.
We don't want to come back to more.
Anything else you could think of to cut?
No, so let's.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, call the question.
Okay, so.
Anthony's kind of rattled by it.
So what's the motion to finalize the budget?
Well, I have to translate, I have my numbers here onto a word document, so give it a five-minute recess, and then.